You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
For today, November 18th is called to order. Sue, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
You're doing it. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, and just as our own.
Thank you, Sue. All right, Ms. Rowdiola, what's your pleasure with regard to the minutes?
Oh, I did not have a chance to approve them, but if the board is fine with them, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
For November 12th?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes for November 12th.
Second.
Have a couple of thoughts. Let's see, page two. RFP for assessing services. This is really more a question for Lori. You suggested scheduling a work session to discuss. Is that something you want to put together soon?
Yeah, maybe non-public, because I have some other details I'd like to fill in. So probably in a non-public session.
Next week?
Sure.
Okay. Then, under insurance. I'm sure everybody was thrilled to hear that our health insurance has gone up 55% without some adjustments.
But that's not correct, the health insurance. The whole budget insurance and not just health insurance.
No, but this is the one I'm referring to. So in that one, you also indicated scheduling a work session to discuss it further. Is that something you want to do in conjunction with the assessing?
If the board would like to do that and discuss the health insurance. I think we were talking more about, when we got into the conversation, about looking into health insurance and the rates in the spring. I'm not sure what that was in regard to, but...
Okay. Sue, then, under number four, and this was my fault. We, there was a motion to appoint Jay Ward as a member of the TIF Advisory Committee. It's actually a member of the Swansea Revenue Development District.
Do we have to revoke that in or something and change the motion?
Just change, yeah. And then, in number six, Rowdiola provided a draft of a combined, it was not a draft of a combined agreement, it was a draft of a proposed agreement for Class 6 roads. And then, there was discussion between a board member and the town administrator as to whether there should be two separate agreements or one combined. And we sided with Ms. Rowdiola, and she approached attorney Courtney, I'm sorry, Cordell Johnston, and we'll find out today as to whether it's one combined agreement or two separate agreements. Then, in number seven, the third sentence, the chief provided a quote to get these items, I'm sorry, fourth sentence. He can move money from other line items from his, and the word budget, you could have from the fire department budget. It'd be nice if he was moving it within his own accounts and he was making a donation. I think, otherwise, that's it.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And then, we have the non-public minutes from November 12th.
Make a motion to approve the non-public minutes.
There were four of them.
One, two, three, and four.
And five.
And five.
And also November 1st.
Oh, November 1st, okay. What do we have from...
That was the meeting that you had.
Yep, okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the contested candidates, all right.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. Publican? Now that we've gotten through all of that, nobody's got anything? First appointment, Mr. DeRusso. Welcome.
Did you want to confront agenda bill?
All right.
Please quiet.
Some of you are aware I've been working on the budget and the road projects for next year. I'm here tonight to request authorization of forego the RFP process and award the 26 paving contract, Allstate paving. They are going to honor their prices from this year for next year. They've paid for us, I think, every year except for one over the last 10 years. They work well with the town. In this process, the other item I'm going to ask for is authorization to give a deposit on the work. Our asphalt budget came in well under budget this year because DPW did a good portion of the preparation for the paving of the roads we did. Also, they took care of the shoulder gravel. So with that request, that also requests that we can give them a deposit out of the operating budget from DPW for the work for next year.
Anybody have any questions?
Hey, gentlemen.
All right.
And they'll bill on those prices as well for our CIP work. The town administrator and I work on a contract. If they've authorized, then we'll have it signed, and they will be the ones that take care of that work next year.
And this will make our 26 budget much smoother.
Yeah, make it approximately $100,000 less, and then to be able to honor those prices this year, I think we're paying $95 a ton for asphalt paving, remarkably low, and to be able to do that next year, so there's a good chance it's going to save some money in the CIP as well, because we'll re-figure everything once we get the contract in place, because we'll know what we're paying, what we're exactly paying.
Okay. Before you make the motion, it should be to Allstate Construction, Inc.?
I move to forego a request for proposed RFP for the 2026 paving project and to award the 2026 paving contract to Allstate Construction, Inc., reducing the impact on budget line 01-4312-4312-1-631 by $100,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the DPW director, Joe DeRusso, to expend the remaining money in the 2025 paving budget line number 01-4312-4312-1-631, up to $50,000 to offset the cost of the 2026 paving contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Would the board like an update on the projects while I'm here?
Sure.
So as most of you are aware, California North Winchester Street's...
Actually, before you do, I wonder, Kai, could we take about a five-minute break? Thank you. We had a suggestion last week. All right, hopefully, everybody can hear us a little better.
So the big one, California, Street North Winchester Street's 96% done. There's some punch list items to do, but we're able to get the final paving done on Friday. We have a meeting with the engineers for a walkthrough to check everything over on Thursday, but that project will be closing out. West Street, the work that DPW did with Allstate is complete as well. We need to go back in and do some shoulder gravel and some cleanup on the side of the roads, but the paving is all done on West Street. The drainage is all complete. That is just the base course. Next year, it will be over, the entire West Street will be overlaid, and then that project will be complete. There'll be some fog lines, there'll be a fog line in place on West Street before the end of the year. I'm just waiting to hear back from the contractor to designate the area where people will be walking in lieu of the sidewalk. The other thing you'll see out here on Eaton Road, we did a repair, some drainage repair, and there was a section of Eaton Road that was settling, causing heavy puddling, creating issues in the wintertime with ice. That's been, the additional drainage has been added, the pavement's been repaired, and when the line striper comes in, those lines will be back on Eaton Road. The railroad street project out here, the sidewalk is complete. The crew right now is just finishing up on the North Swansea Rail Trail Overlay Project, which was a grant from the state. We should have that done here within, either at the end of this week or the beginning of next. Starting, we're fully prepared for the winter storms right now.
Good work you guys did.
The last thing I know, near and dear to somebody, the guardrail for Weber Hill retaining wall will be starting on Thursday, so that should be in before the end of the week, before snow flies, to protect that wall.
I just wanted to compliment him on saving the town of Swansea all that money, $50,000, on just doing the road work, and that he's always looking to save his money. It's incredible to me, the amount of money that he saves the town of Swansea. I really want to compliment him and his crew there. They're over and above to me, and I get involved, I go with them, and I know what he goes through. So compliments to you, Joe, good job.
Thank you, I'll share that with the crew.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Town Hall?
Yeah, and Town Hall, we're waiting to hear back from the contractor on the potential costs.
Yeah, but the project you finished.
Oh, yeah, the back deck, yes. The back deck, Angel and Paul and the crew were able to replace those back stairs that were failing. They were dangerous, for lack of better terms. So that's been repaired, some rotting clapboards have been repaired, and that's wrapped up before the winter.
And to echo Jim, but all that your crew has done with regard to the new fire station and the work that they've done to reduce that cost significantly.
And that, that's another item I didn't bring up, but that's coming along very well. We're hoping windows and doors to be in place by the end of the month and concrete down.
The roof is on?
75, 80% on. It'll be, as soon as the framers come back and the steel is put in place, the rest of the roof will be on and then shingled.
So it'll be watertight before the really...
Not too far off, yeah. They want to pour the concrete, obviously, before they put the doors in place, because you don't want to get concrete splashed up on the doors, but then the windows and doors will be going in, the concrete will be in place, and then start working on the interior stuff.
Incredible.
It's amazing. They're doing a great job.
Hey, did you notice if they put the speed limit thing out there? I haven't had a chance to go check. Tony wanted this.
I did not, I didn't know I noticed that.
Last I knew, it was on Warmac Road. Yeah, that's where you did the water puddle, was it near? Like, as you come off of there? Is that where the...
No, it was on the other side. It was past Pine Street heading towards the electrical substation.
Oh, okay.
Joe, do I have something? Joe, as you know, I live up in that area. I watch Joe daily basis, three or four times. The man is a wonder, because he's on the radio, he's on the back hall. All my years of living in the city of Swansea, I've never seen a head of that property work once.
He won't let me drive. I tried to take him up the other day, he wouldn't let me in. But I can handle that. He won't even give me a chance at it. I mean, I want one time. I went to the buyer, he won't even let me sit in the seat. I'm really upset over that. I'm going to get in at one of these days.
Thanks, Michael. Anybody else? We talk about speed limit signs on North Winchester Street or the California street portion that you did 30 miles an hour and no parking? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, on the top, are we going to do that, Joe? We're going to be thinking? How do you put those, where do you put those? On the sidewalk?
Yeah, we have a machine that pounds them down into the ground.
Right through that?
Yeah.
Well, what do you think about it? I don't notice people parking there, actually, but maybe it was at the beginning, but...
I think it's not a bad idea to put some signs up, especially with potential for new apartments. new apartments, and sometimes there's limited parking. I have seen people parking recently on North Winchester Street on the stone swale that's in between the road and the apartment. You can see tire marks in the grass, so...
I did see that. They were in that area there, I did see that.
Probably not a bad idea.
I thought somebody drove off the road.
No, they were parked right out front there. But yeah, we can put up 30 mile per hour signs, at least at the start of the roads, and then no parking, no roadside parking signs.
What do you think? On board?
I'm all for that.
Yeah, there's just, especially on California Street, if somebody parks on the road, it's a real hazard. The road is narrow, obviously, because of the challenges of the property boundaries there, but as long as people are doing the speed limit and driving safely, there's, it's very safe for two cars to pass. If people are exceeding the speed limit and driving recklessly, then it's not safe, and it's on them, not on the road design.
So when we put up signs like that on all our roads, we don't have to check with the state?
No, it's the meeting, it's the speed limit criteria that's already established. Any road that's not posted is a 30 mile per hour zone. So it's not, you're not changing the speed limit, you're just posting it.
Any road that isn't posted is 30 miles an hour?
Yes.
I thought it was 50.
No, it's 30.
He said that right on camera.
And I did.
Yeah, there's probably some people don't...
I would give him a ticket right now. He should get a ticket right now.
But yeah, I can get signs, I don't know what we have. I don't know what we have for stock, for in signs, but they usually take a couple weeks and get made up and delivered, so it's not a big deal to have them up. At least out of Route 10 coming in, I think at the very least, because it should be, it's covered from, I don't know if there's one on Main Street or not, but we could put one at the start of Main Street and then out at Route 10.
So I talked to the person up on that West Street, up, me and you try to scope it out. I guess it's up a little further on the left edge of the road, going up. So coming down is on the right side. I don't know if we looked over there, but they claim it, and it's caving in, and it's all falling in. Because I said, I went up there, there's nothing there, and they said, "No, you missed it, you got to go to the left side of the road." I said...
There's probably some pavement up there that are breaking up, but that'll be addressed with an overlay next year, but I'll take another look at it.
So he said, "Coming down," like before Dana's house, we went to that corner on the right, he said, "I wish they could put some gravel in there, we can take a look at it, take a peek at it."
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Josh Whipple. Welcome, Josh. Tell us about the garden shed.
It's pretty much done. I just need to put the roof on and put the linoleum floor, and it should be good to pull out. I'm hoping probably Friday to have it out there, so.
And power?
Hamlet came two weeks ago, and they're working on getting me a quote to update the power for both compactors, and by the sounds of it, it's just putting another circuit for each one, so should be pretty simple and quick.
Power to the shack? For the what, lights?
Lights and heat.
Oh, put an electric heater in there?
Yep, yep, yeah, so it's all, that's why it takes so long, trying to make sure it's done right and sturdy, and everything's caulked and sealed, so.
That's it? God, is somebody going to live in it? It's beautiful.
You could, and built it like that.
That's a beautiful piece, Josh.
Yeah, I didn't want to rush through it, and at this point, we've put so much work in that.
Yeah, we've been taking some slack for this, huh, that we didn't get on and move it along, right? Well, we can see why, right, Bill?
It's a work of art.
It's a work of art.
It's going to be done right.
I'm glad we didn't push them, Billy. Did the right thing, right?
So hopefully Friday it'll be done, and then hopefully I'll hear back from Hamlet within the next week or so about power, and by the sounds of it, it shouldn't take them long, or it costs a whole lot, so should work out pretty good.
All right. We got to run cable in there for a little TV?
We'll find the TV somewhere.
All right. Anything else? Any updates?
Just busy, trying to get everything done before it snow and freezes up, so last minute shipments, trying to get that all out before the end of the year, and then roll it into the annual report, get that all in, so get the plan laid out for the rest of the year so far, so.
So does it warm up pretty good in there with the new furnace and everything?
Yeah, that one's really good, yeah.
The gas, looking more nice?
Yep, yep.
That's good.
Burn pile all set?
I actually moved burn pit one, I moved everything with the new rock bucket, and the pile's about half the size, so the far big pile, that's going to have to wait, because there's no real room to move it, so I'll probably have to thaw it out with some burn barrels during the winter, but that won't take too long, because it's all compost in the middle, so I can't burn it as is, but once I start moving it, it should go pretty quick after that, so.
Why is it you can't burn it as is?
It's got so much compost, dirt and leaves, that it would just send fireworks and cause a mess, and our PVC roof, one like that very much, so I'm trying to keep that at a minimum.
What do you mean, ashes and everything will fly up in the air?
Oh, yeah, if they sit too long, then all the leaves and pine needles will fall to the bottom, and as it's burning, it just spits it straight up in the air, and it'll go down the campground if it gets too big, so.
Really?
So, but if it was a normal brush pile, we could burn it.
So now what are you going to do? You going to sort through it?
We just have to move it, basically, because we didn't get our burn permit for 2024, so I'm going to work on seeing if we can get a site visit for the first year to get our 26 burn permit, so it was a whole challenge there, and that's why we have such a big pile now, so. And we haven't had the ideal summer to burn it all either, so.
Pretty dry.
Kind of stuck with it right now.
Anybody else? Thank you, Josh.
Yep. Have a good one. Thank you.
Sally Malley, Keen Housing Kids Collaborative. How are you, Sally? Welcome. Do you want us to do a chair, so you don't have to stand?
Oh.
Michael, would you mind handing over your phone?
So I'm the executive director of the Keen Housing Kids Collaborative, and town of Swansea has very generously supported us for the last couple of years, and we have put in another request for this year. But I did, I wanted to really let Lori know about us, because she's new, well, not new any, but new to me, and, but I thought it was a good time to also give us like an update on the kids collaborative and what we've been doing with the kids in Swansea. So our mission is to build a successful, or build a foundation for successful adulthood. So the children that we serve, there's around 108 kids in Swansea that are eligible programs through us, but the real, the vision is to help break the cycle. So we want to help the kids acquire skills that are going to help them attain upward social mobility by the time they get to adults. So really, we serve children that are living in affordable housing, and we want to encourage them to grow into adults that aren't going to be relying on assistance from agencies in the future. So this is just a, sort of, not complicated, but detailed. I don't want to take too much of your time, but the premise is, is that 65% of children that are born into households that live in affordable housing stay there through adulthood, and that's the cycle that we want to break. And it does talk about, 80% of our households are single mothers. I don't know why I'm looking over there when it's right in front of me as well. But the big piece is, is that there's an opportunity gap that these kids have. It's 6,000 hours of participating in out-of-school and summer learning activities by the time they get to middle school compared to their peers that have more access to financial means. And that's what we're trying to close that gap, so that the kids do have access to the opportunities.
Could you rephrase that? You're saying that it's a $6,000, $6,000 hour deficit?
Gap, yes. So they do, there's some participation, but compared to their peers, there's actually research that says for children that live in more affluent households, parents are spending about $8,000 a year on these type of enrichment activities. And the, the idea is to help them, when they participate in these activities, they're accessing skills that will help them in the classroom, they'll have better academic progress, and then have better upward social mobility as adults. So skills like critical thinking, team building, communication skills, all the social, emotional learning skills that they can acquire when they are participating in a sports team, or that they, when they go to summer camp, or when they're learning how to play a musical instrument. It's those activities that can help them grow and thrive. So that's what we want to help them have access to. So we want kids to be, we want to help them from birth to 18. We want to make sure that they're ready to learn when they're entering kindergarten by accessing different things. We provide them with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library program, which gives children under five a book's delivered every month to their house, an age-appropriate book. We want kids to be at reading levels and math levels, grade level elementary school, so these skills that they're acquiring, they can use these skills in the classroom to help them learn. We want kids to graduate from high school, and we want to help kids not get involved with juvenile justice, and we want to encourage them not to become parents as teenagers. So all of these opportunities are what's going to help them meet those benchmarks, and the research shows that if you do meet those benchmarks throughout your life, you will have a better future. This is, this model just shows you what, what we do. So the kids collaborative, there's two of us, we're just, we're just an intermediary for, a liaison between the families, and then we partner with all of the different community partners. We started 10 years ago and had four partners, The Y, Keen Rec, Moco Arts, and another, another post writing place, but now we have over 50. So we want kids to have the opportunity to choose something that interests them, that's going to help them learn. So we're using, we're not recreating the wheel and having a direct service where kids are segregated from their peers. This way, they're utilizing, or we're leveraging, the high-quality programs we have in our community, but the kids are also participating with their peers, so they're not feeling, they feel like they belong, and trying to remove the stigma that's associated with kids that come from a low socioeconomic background or household. We primarily serve, we do only serve the keen housing families and Southwest Community Services. So for Swansea, that means there's a Southwest Community Service property down here, the town, it's called the Swansea Township. And then there's two keen housing properties, Riverbend and Evergreen Knoll. And then we also, there are voucher holders, people that receive a rent subsidy from Keen Housing, they can live anywhere in Swansea as long as the landlord will accept the subsidy as part of their, part of their rent payment. So for us here in 2025, that's around 800 kids that are eligible, and 75% of, or 75 of those kids, about 70%, have been actively participating in programs through the kids collaborative, which is great, and it's been growing. We started to serve Swansea, we started with Keen Housing in 2015, and then we brought on SCS in 2020, I'm sorry. So they've been with us for about five years.
So the 800 children that you have, is that countywide, or is that Swansea?
The 108?
108, but then I heard you say 800?
Oh, yeah, in total, we serve 650 children, that is, across, majority is keen, Swansea and Swansea's around 20%, and then there is some others, depending where, if they get a voucher, they can actually move wherever they want to within, actually, the country, believe it or not, but we would only service them if they were in our area. So for this past year, these are some of the activities that the kids have been participating in through Swansea Rec, the American School of Gymnastics, Sherlin Studios, which is a martial arts place, the Keen Family YMCA, Camp Dakota, Moco Arts, and we also offer driver's education. That costs nearly $1,000 now to do that, so it's very expensive. The households that we serve, their household income is around $25,000, which is, you know, you could just imagine how you could operate on a household when, I think the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute recently said that for a household of four, you need 100, over $100,000 just, just to live. So for, these opportunities are just out of reach for the families that we serve, and that's, we want to, we want to be that, provide that opportunity for the kids. So this year, we spent almost $26,000 on these opportunities for the kids in Swansea. We also spent, we had 12 kids from the kids collaborative that went to the Swansea summer camp, so we spent about $12,000. That was, also, there were kids from outside of Swansea that attend, that would attend, that we would pay for. And why is it, you know, why do we want to exist? So we talked about, you know, breaking the cycle of poverty, but basically, we want to help our children thrive. We believe that when they do, they can become engaged members of the community, they can actually be our potential workforce and become independent adults, so them not having as much, having to lean on other social services to help them throughout their life. That's it. So I just, do you have any questions? Or I just, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I just really believe that it's important for, for our kids, and we are happy to help them, and really appreciative of the town being committed to it as well.
Thank you.
Very valuable resource, for sure.
Sure, yes, that was interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was really nice.
Steve?
Yes. Sure, yes, yeah, I don't know, that's a good point. I don't, I know with Keen Public Library, I see a lot of communications that we share with our families. I don't know that I have a connection with the Swansea library, so yeah, I'd love to learn more, for sure. Thank you.
Just you and another person does this?
Yes.
Did I hear that right?
Yeah. But, so we're not, you were not putting on the programs, but we, there's around, out of the 600 kids is around 300 households, and we, you know, my job's to raise money. Our budget's around $500,000 to support those 600 kids. And then my coworker, she is, she talks directly with the families, helps them work out, you know, what's going to work for them, and then communicates with the community partners to get them registered. And one of the big things about that is that the kids, nobody at, so say the Keen Family YMCA, when the kiddo that we register, when they go to class, the instructor doesn't know that they're a scholarship kid. So they're, they're treated as just as one of the other kids, so it helps remove that stigma even between the peers, but also with the, with the adults. And that's what we do, is that we're doing that, and then we, we raise the money and then pay the partners for the service. Some, a lot of our partners give us, we negotiate big discounts with, but our smaller ones, when we're doing, it's their small businesses, and they can't, that's part of their, that's their income, so we want to, we want to support them as well, so that's where the money, the costs are for us.
Where's the majority of the money come from? Where do you raise it from?
Well, what's really great is that Keen Housing and Southwest Community Services, they give us a service fee per household, and that covers our operating costs for me and my coworker. So every dollar that we raise does go directly towards youth programs, and what's cool about that is it's getting recycled back into our economies, Keen and Swansea. But we do all the things, write grants, hold benefit breakfasts, we're a part of the Growth by Giving Music Fest and got some funding from that. So we really look at any opportunity that we can, get donations from businesses and individuals, and yeah, just try to spread the word that we need as much money as people can give. Thanks for listening, and thank you for giving me time, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Sally.
Is that available to be put on our website? Because it was very blurry, but...
I could email it to you, I probably wouldn't want it posted on the website necessarily, but I could email it for your, you know, review if you wanted to take a closer look at it. Sure, I'll send it to you, Lori.
Perfect.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, next is a zoning petition warrant article. Okay, next is a zoning petition warrant article. I'm puzzled as to why that's being presented to us, but.
I was puzzled as well.
Speak up a little bit.
I had Adam send me the RSA on that. It's basically, is a petition warrant article for the zoning board. And. According to. So they submitted it to the planning board, and Adam's just following the statute on how we are supposed to present this. And apparently, it has to come before the board. And signatures have been confirmed, but the town clerk needs BOS to see it before it goes to planning board. So we have to say, yep, we acknowledge it, the town clerk has seen it, it's going to the planning board.
Do we also recommend the planning board not, not recommend it?
I don't. I'm not sure about that. I think that he's just following the statute on how it's supposed to be presented to the town. So you're asking if you, if you should make a recommendation on whether or not it should.
Well, there's no question whether or not it's, the board would, would recommend that it not be recommended by the planning board.
Okay, I don't see why not. Why, I don't see why you couldn't do that.
Okay. All right, did you all get a chance to read the petition?
Quickly, briefly, please, I'm sorry.
Well, you have to abstain because you own a piece of property.
Is that right?
Yeah. You own a piece of property on Basil Road. And your, your property is one of the ones that would be impacted. But anyway, it's, it's the same.
I know, yeah.
Petition from what was done.
Good for the residential and commercial, right, to separate.
Yeah, spots only.
Be able to, spots only, right?
Jimmy, right hand.
I got it, I, I know. Okay, I have to abstain anyways, because I do.
You can talk about it, though. You can talk about it, though.
No, I get it, I'm good.
It's on our agenda for tomorrow night, and what we're going to have to do is, before we can make a decision, we're going to have a public hearing tomorrow first.
Is the public hearing tomorrow?
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday, the public hearing on that?
No, we won't be, we'll have to set the public hearing. We have to accept the petition. We have to accept it, because they got to write the petition.
So that's going to happen Thursday?
Yeah, we'll set up a date, because what they're going to do is they're going to present their idea of what they want to do to us first. And then we'll have to set a public hearing for it. And then the planning board will deliberate, and then make a decision of whether to recommend it or not. It will automatically go on tomorrow, it has to go on tomorrow, because it's a petition out of. But we'll go in there and say not recommended or recommended. Like the Spleck Board does with all their, all their work.
And the reason it's here is RSA six seventy-five four.
Because I have a map, Jimmy, and I got all the paperwork at home, so if you want to show up at the meeting tomorrow night, you can.
Thursday.
Thursday, Michael.
Thursday. I keep thinking, guys, it's supposed to be a Wednesday, you got me all.
Supposed to be. Our, our town administrator is off to a conference. Yeah. It's very, very intuitive, very informative conference.
If I can make it, I'll make it, Mike, because I'd like to see, hear that.
Do you have a chance to review it?
If you can, Jimmy, I'm sure that you can get the information right from Adam. He can give you a pack, because our package is a public information.
This RSA says the selectmen or the village district commissioners shall submit the petitions to the planning board in a timely manner.
What if we don't want to submit it?
I don't think we have a choice to.
Oh. So I can submit it, because on that.
All right, so consider it submitted to the port of selectmen and consider it submitted to the planning board with a recommendation?
To not do it.
All right, with a recommendation to the planning board to not recommend it. But they do have to go to the public hearing process. All right, what do you think? No, it's spot zoning. It's just, it's unfortunate.
Oh, they tried this the year before, Mike?
Last year.
Last year.
It's just, it's an example of just, I think we had general business back in the day. And then zoning came in, and it does impact properties, but.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of court cases on that.
Yeah, and there's other ways to handle it. So, anyway, we'll see what, see what your public hearing brings. Let's see, withdrawal, next item is a withdrawal from the Mount Caesar Union Library Expendable Trust. Mary and Steve, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Want to bring an extra chair?
Yeah, we're here to ask you if you, if we can take a withdrawal from the trust. What happened was pigeons got into our third floor. They got in through the bell tower, there was a breach. We don't know how that happened. They got into the third floor, the mess up there is unbelievable. It's dead, there were dead birds and you-know-what all over the place. And we did have a company clean it up, but, clean up the bell tower. But the third floor is still covered in pigeon stuff, all our antiques up there and stuff. Bergeron is going to come and repair the bell tower breach. So the, the money for the, for Bergeron is thirty-five, three thousand five hundred forty-two dollars. And they have paid a down payment on that. The total for the Gold Star Services or the cleanup crew, we paid them thirty-five hundred to do the bell tower, and they're charging us four thousand to do the third floor. So we've paid out so far five thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. We still will owe, when this is all said and done, five thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars. The total is eleven thousand forty-two dollars. And we've got fifty-two thousand six, fifty-two thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-nine cents in our capital reserve. So would you approve us to use that money to pay these bills?
Totally. You're going to wipe it out totally? Are you going to use it all?
No.
No, 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 only, only eleven thousand dollars of the fifty-two.
Oh, it's fifty-two thousand?
We have, in the, in the, in the fund, in the capital reserve fund, is fifty-two thousand two hundred sixteen.
I thought you were saying five thousand two hundred.
No, 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 fifty-two thousand. So the, the total for this whole terrible mess is eleven thousand forty-two.
So it's part of the eleven thousand that you want to withdraw to reimburse?
Yeah, if we could re, yeah, the library's paid out five thousand two hundred seventy-one, and we would love to be reimbursed if we could, because it's put a terrible strain on our budget.
So that eleven thousand will take care of the five thousand also?
Yeah.
Yeah. Includes the five thousand.
But if, if they wanted to do a, I think what you would like us to probably is submit the bills from Bergeron and Gold Star when they do the final, that final cleanup to you, and you would pay those bills. That's how we've done it before. I, I, I don't know why the people that paid this fifty-two thousand seventy-one did not originally just go to the town for, for the money from the capital reserve, but they didn't. So we're here trying to make it right.
I did go up and climb in there during the summer and attempted to clean it. And it was well beyond, I, I brought down four bags of dried pigeon poop, and there was probably at least twice that left up there.
Plus a lot of dead birds.
And there were dead birds up there, and so.
You also blocked up the hole, didn't you, so that's.
Yeah, I put a little cage, at least tried to, I put some caging behind one of the openings that I thought was big enough for the pigeons to come in. So that slowed it down, but they still found another way to get in, so.
We don't, the thing is, we don't go up there hardly ever, because it's, it's, there's no heat, there's no electricity. We, it's basically a storage area, so rarely do we go up there. And when someone went up there and went, oh my God.
What was the big expense to patch a hole from Bergeron? You said thirty-five hundred dollars, what did they?
They're charging us three thousand.
But what are they actually doing, patching a hole?
They're going to repair the bell tower.
The face?
You know what they're going to do.
Yeah, there's wooden slats up there, and some of them are probably ready to fall out. So we're going to have to put caging behind all of the, the, all four sides of the inside.
Take the slat, oh, go from the inside.
So this won't happen again?
From the inside, they're going to repair any slats that need to be repaired or replaced. And then they're also going to screen the whole inside. So if for some reason, through a storm, one of the slats falls out, the birds can't get in. So we're going to put a quarter inch screening behind every, all four sides of the.
The bell tower, yeah.
So how long have you think this has been going on for? Is this years?
No, no, I, we, I don't know. We don't know how this breach got into the bell tower, but we suspect that when we did, that we had the building painted last summer, and they power washed a lot of the building. We think maybe they might have knocked a screen loose that was in the bell tower. I don't know, I think that was, we don't know that for sure, but.
I think it's been a while because of the amount of, it became a pigeon, you know, resting place. Lots of pigeons. So we're trying to.
What are the antiques that are up there? What are the, is that what you were talking about last time we met? The antiques?
No, well, these are the, these are the spillover from the vault. By the way, we're having an open house on Saturday, if you want to come over to the library and view all of our many antiquities that are in the, in the basement of our library.
Yeah. No, we won't, we won't open up the third floor.
No, nobody's going up there.
We have an abundance of chairs from, I think, when it was.
Lots and lots of old chairs.
Yeah, when it was a school, the wooden chairs still exist. So they were climbing up our, the basement area where we.
So we're going to sell them?
Well, we don't know.
We're not sure we can, because of the historical nature of it, it gets very gun-wounded. We asked the historical person in Keen about it. He, he gave us a three-page dissertation how we can sell the chairs, because they're.
Because they were donated.
Antiques. So I think the school chairs weren't donated, they just came along with being a school. So we're looking.
We have to figure out which are which.
Yeah.
They could be worth a lot of money.
Well, or.
Take them to Antique Roadshow.
There, you know, if you looked at the value of some of the antiquities that are in that basement, you probably could fund us for the next ten years, but we have very, very.
There's some cool stuff down there.
Against that.
Yeah.
Well, are we looking into it to, to sell them?
Absolutely.
People have looked into it in the past, and there's no way we can sell any of those antiques because of the.
But we got our answer, it's out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, unless, unless you can prove that they have no provenance in Swansea. Because they were originally, the thing is, in eighteen eighty-nine, Lucy Carpenter, who was one of the founders of the library, started this antiquarian society. She had all the Swansea residents come and bring their antiques and their, their relics and things like that to the library, and that's what's in there. A lot of that stuff has been there for, for, since eighteen, the eighteen eighties, so.
So we'd like to, we're trying to get it so people can see them. So we're working on the basement in such a way that, that we can, for a few hours, people can come see the antiquities, we're labeling them all.
I tell you, yeah, yeah.
When is this?
Saturday, from ten to two. You know who did a lot of this work is Eileen Lodge, she's, was fantastic.
Yeah.
She loved going down there and organizing all those antiques, it was right up her alley. So she's going to be there.
Before this year, they would just throw them in there, just hilly-nilly. So we, we were.
We've been working on organizing it all.
We have our own table, everything's being labeled, so people can actually see some of these antiquities.
And a few people, Lee Dunham and Victoria Ames are going to come and do some talk, talks about antiques and Swansea history, so should be interesting. Anyway, can we spend that money, please?
Bob Smith would be a good one to bring in.
Pardon me?
Bob Smith would be a good one to bring in.
Okay.
From, from both avenues.
I don't know him, yeah.
Antiquities and also Swansea history.
Yeah. Richard.
Are those chairs up there, what they're talking about, like, that you're wearing here? How those chairs up there look like they were here originally with this building?
You never sat in those chairs?
I didn't, but I went up and looked at them, and they look like they're a hundred years ago.
Yep, those were.
Probably were.
They were high-tech a hundred years ago.
No kidding?
They really were. They're more comfortable than these things.
I'm sorry.
Do you ever look at those chairs at that?
Eleven thousand forty-two. Oh, three thousand five hundred forty-two. We paid half of that, one thousand seven, one thou.
Yeah, seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred.
What a shame, but who would have thought we'd have to spend this much money on pigeons?
Oh, no kidding.
Right, we could have found much better things to do.
I moved to authorize the withdrawal of cleaning out pigeon forty-two dollars from the Mount Caesar Union Library Expendable Trust Fund. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much. And so, Mary, Mary, you'll, you'll submit all the invoices so that we can track it? Or Teresa, however?
I'll have a document about how we're paying for electricity for the charging.
Oh, good.
I'm working on a document for that, so we'll get it up to you.
Thank you, Steve.
To justify what we're charging.
That's great, appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Next item, next item on our agenda is a review of, a review of the current elderly exemption income asset and exemption qualification limits. This is, did you, were you able to determine when, when this was last reviewed?
They've never been reviewed.
Oh, so it's from the inception?
Yeah, they were. So we did have Nick with Mirazoff Assessing kind of go through and give his opinion of our, the elderly exemption amount. So there's three different criteria. But just to give a little bit of a background on it, yeah, they were adopted in two thousand nine. And since that time, there's been no adjustments to the, to the exemption amounts or the income or asset levels. In twenty twenty-five, so as of twenty twenty-five, the town currently has thirty-six active elderly exemptions. And they have the different ranges.
Do we have, do we have the thirty-six broken out by age group?
She does, I didn't put that in here, but Christine has all that in Avatar. I think it might be on the MS One form. So in, as reported on the MS One, and obviously those figures vary by year. The rationale for updating the exemption limits is that it's been fifteen years since the town has adopted or even reviewed or adjusted them. And during this time, inflation and the cost of living has significantly increased, affecting the stability of some of our residents. And two thousand nine, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, since then, has risen by more than forty percent, which obviously reflects, you know, significant increases on the cost of housing and healthcare and all of those goods for our elderly folks. And I'm not sure how many neighboring towns have updated theirs. I do have, I think I provided it in the packet. The, I thought I had some highlighted in here. But you can see Swansea's in bold right here, this is the elderly exemption amounts. So this is twenty-five thousand, right now, we're giving as an exemption amount on that property valuation.
For people aged sixty-five to seventy-four.
Yep. And then it goes up from there, seventy-five to seventy-nine is thirty-five, and eighty-plus is forty thousand dollars off the, off of their assessment.
So that comes off the assessment of the.
The assessed value. So if their house is valued at three hundred, it's going to be valued at forty thousand less than that, or twenty-five thousand, whatever bracket they fall in.
That doesn't seem much.
It's not much.
Right?
When you, and these are just.
Well, it seems like a lot until you view it by comparison to the other communities. For, for example, Swansea is at forty and Ringe is two hundred. And so obviously, there's some room in between. But without, without reviewing it in the context, it, it seems like a little or it seems like a lot, but the context is important.
The context, yep.
So you're, you're saying like Ringe, the property values are much higher?
So, and these are, and these are just towns in our, in Cheshire County. I looked outside a little bit at other towns that are not in our, and they were well over two hundred thousand or whatever those amounts were. And, and.
Well, but in fairness, outside of Cheshire County, if you're going east, their property values are substantially higher to, to begin with.
That's what I just meant, that's what I meant. So Ringe, their property values are a lot higher, so they make that.
No, no, I'm saying outside of Cheshire County. If you get into Stratford or Rochester.
Oh, oh, okay.
Theirs, but within, I think your lie is to stay within Cheshire. But even within Cheshire. But even within Cheshire, you, you've got Surrey with $5,000 exemption at 80 plus, and you got Ringe at 200,000. And we're so, and, and that carries all the way through. What is, so then, in order to qualify for this, there's then the income limits that are applied?
Yep, so the, so the, um, recommended adjustments for the exemption amounts. I had, um, to increase the age 65 to 74, to increase that from 25 to 50,000. So, that's the exemption amount. These are all the exemption amounts. And then age 75 to 79 would be to, um, go from 35,000 to 75,000 for assessed value. And 80 years or more would be to increase it from 40 to 100,000. Christine, Christine and Nick and I all went through all of this together. And this one with the 80 plus, Christine and Nick recommended 80, and I thought to bump it up to 100,000. Now, these are all your, at your discretion. This is your choice. You can play with that. But I felt the strong, you know, a strong need for that age to, especially where our valuations are so high. And we haven't done anything since 2009. So, Christine and, um, Nick were in agreement on the 80,000, and I, I thought it should be at 100. But you guys can decide on that. The income limits, uh, single, I, we are recommending, and the rest, we were all in agreement on to increase from 24,000 to 35,000. For married, to increase the income limits from 32,000 to 60,000.
Sixty?
Sixty, yep. For married.
So, in order to qualify for the exemptions, that's where they have to be, or below that for income.
But do you need age and this?
Yes.
This, the exemption amount is the exemption amount.
It's not based on income?
Yeah, it is. You need assets and income. The amount, Jimmy, is the amount, if they qualify, that's the amount that they're gonna get off their property value.
Got it.
But you have to qualify to get that amount.
And to qualify, you have to be under this number if you're single.
Correct.
And under this number, it matters, right?
Correct, yep.
I got it.
Yep.
And so, if this were to, at some point, we'll, we'll agree with whatever numbers we agree with. Will there then be an analysis to what the tax impact is gonna be on the balance of the taxpayers?
Since it varies, because we don't know how many exemptions we'll have next year, would be an approximate, we could show an approximate increase now that we have a tax rate.
Any other questions?
The last one was just the asset limit to increase.
It's hard because you don't know how many additional people are going to be eligible.
Income-wise, right.
It does seem, from my point of view, it sounds very reasonable because these are folks who were, who were sort of, I was people complaining about the rise in the assessed values because they, they felt really squeezed. And this is a, this is a chance for the town to recognize that need that was developed because of the, the large increase in assessed values. Yes, it will be a little less revenue than it should otherwise get, but it seems like they're taking care of the population and it's taken care of.
We wanna keep people.
The revenue won't change.
No, revenue won't change, but the, the tax burden will change.
Right. It'll be redistributed a little bit.
Redistributed a little bit. So, my taxes might go up a little bit, you know, in front of us.
Right.
The perfect example is where I live, in the mobile home, and these mobile homes went from 40,000 to 100,000. So, I have an elderly woman living in my park. She, her, now she has to pay a lot of tax money because her house is, you know, they're selling for 100,000 now.
And they're on fixed income.
That's right.
She's still being having a higher.
I'm having people come to me because they can't afford the rent because it's going to the taxes. They're in that situation.
So, so, yes, I mean, I, I think that's a civic response though, for all this, which pay taxes to take care of some of the people. Especially if these age brackets, these retired people with the fixed incomes, they can't do much about it. So, it seems as though this is the, the right way to go.
Yeah. I'm surprised these net, numbers were just set so long ago and not adjusted in the, in the meantime. I mean, we're talking over 10, 20 years, maybe, but thinking these numbers are the same.
Well, if you think a lot of what just happened since 2020 till now, a lot has happened.
A lot has happened. Big changes.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's a way you folks could establish, uh.
That's what I was just gonna get to. Every five years or every four?
Evaluation, either five years or when there's a major reassessment, because reassessment for five years. So, maybe every five years, you also look at this.
We take a peek at this, and I think.
I will say too, um, when I left Ringe, and, uh, I have a lot of trust in Avatar from an assessing standpoint. I'll go on the record and say that. But they.
They don't.
They recommended, Avatar recommended Ringe look at their, um,
Really?
Their values, yep, and their income limits. And that was over a year ago.
Now, are these, are these rates set by the legislature as the minimum and the maximum? Because like the veterans, it is.
They're gonna decide on that.
We would, but then it has to go on the warrant.
Correct.
Yeah, so it'll be the voters that would.
Like, then the voters have to approve the increase.
Right. And if they don't, it would fall back.
The voters have to approve this?
Yeah, they would, they would approve.
Not this pack?
No.
The whole thing?
The whole package.
Yeah, so the next step would be to include, if the board is, to include it on the warrant. And it would have to be passed by.
See how many other people in town feel the way I do, that we need to support them. Usually Swansea's pretty good, those are the veterans. They're usually pretty supportive of those programs.
Yeah, we've, we've increased the veterans exemption, so, or expanded it. Over a couple of times, we've had, uh.
Which one? Is, is the one that everybody gets and there's a hundred percent one?
Yeah, so maybe I'm confused.
You know, when you really look at this.
All I'm getting is that the voters supported it.
So, Phil, when we really look at this, actually, it really should be pretty stable because if you think about it, with the evaluations coming up, and I was just reaching that, we're still leveling it off. That's what we're doing, right? I mean, it, it isn't gonna, we ain't gonna lose a lot of money as a town, as much as you think. We're not gonna lose money.
The taxpayers, like myself, are gonna pay a little more in order to do this.
And you're also adding property value every year. What did it add? 12 million in valuation this year?
Up, Jimmy?
Yeah.
12 million up?
12 million dollar from all the buildings that are going around.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but, but we sort of count on that increased revenue to pay for some of the increased expenses we have too. So, I mean, it, it, we don't wanna have too much of rising taxes. Well, I guess it's a balancing act, but it seems to me as though we should.
No, but let me give you an example of what I'm trying to think in my head. Here's a woman that lives in my mobile home park, okay? And she's been getting exempt, she's been getting money off her taxes, and she pays $200 every year, right? Now, we got a huge increase because of the evaluation. So, now she went to the town hall and she's gonna pay 1,000. But all we're doing is bringing it back to what she was paying.
Right.
Right?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
She might pay a little more.
She might pay a little more, but not with the.
Certainly help. And of course, what that means is that we have to pay more.
I get it, yeah, you're right. That's right. That's right. So, there is some money there.
Change its revenue. That's the revenues.
I understand, yeah.
Need our needs, right? The, the, the other side of that is if we have the extra properties, then we have more, more revenue from those properties. And so, maybe the individual taxpayer doesn't have to pay as much. So, we hope that taxes don't have to go up too much. These are one thing that'll make it go up, other than making more happens, obviously.
That's true.
That's why we need all more businesses in town. Right.
Well, you saw the article on Chicago, what they're going through. Same thing's gonna be in other cities.
And what's?
Businesses are leaving. So, it's throwing it back on the residential taxpayer.
Yeah, I saw that.
Anyway, I, I appreciate this. I'd like to think about it. What do you think, Mark?
I'm for it. Think we need to do it.
I'm in concept, but in terms of the numbers?
No, I'm okay with those numbers too. I think it might even be low.
Yeah, we're gonna bring that to Tivie you said before, right?
Well, I'm asking to do that, but.
Yeah, you were asking to bring it back. Let's think about it. Let's digest it. Let's think. Um, I think it's a smart thing for us to do.
All right, so we'll revisit it on the, on the third?
Yeah.
All right?
That's great.
Anything else? All right. Good job, Lori. Uh, oh, well, I get to depart this seat and go to that seat for the next item on the agenda since I can speak to it, but I can't.
Are you gonna speak to it?
I am gonna speak to it, yes.
All right, go take that hat off and put your.
Put this one on. So, this next item is, it's a request by Avon Rouge Development, uh, requesting the select board to support local, regional, community development block grant, block grant funding totaling 500,000. James, it's in your capable hands.
Welcome. Can you state your name, please, Faris, for the record?
Bill Hucker.
Very nice to meet you tonight, Bill.
Hucker with S V N, the Masiello Group, here on behalf of Avon Rouge Development.
Very good. Would you like to open the doors to this tonight and, um, present to the select board, um, why it should be a good thing to back it?
Oh, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. You're on the floor, sir.
Actually, I'm, I'm here to ask you to consider holding a public hearing on the 17th of December. It's a three-step process. There's three separate hearings that would be held that night, probably take 15 minutes. There'll be people, uh, here who will explain the community development block grant program. And then, at that point, ask the town to administer, apply for and administer the block grant. Uh, as a community, communities are allowed to apply for up to $500,000 per year. And Avon Rouge Development will be asking for 500,000. It's not from the town. It's, it's the, asking the town to support it and apply for it and administer it.
So, does the town itself get the grant, and then we submit it to, to go for this project? Is that how it works?
Right, and much of the money is a pass-through, but the town has the opportunity to charge for the hours expended by the town administrator and finance director and whomever else to put the grant together, or the application together, and then to administer the funds.
So, we would have a public hearing you're asking for, where people could come in, and we're gonna get it explained to everybody? And then we'll go from there, right?
Yep, that's it.
So, your request tonight is just to have the public hearing?
Correct.
It's harmless, just to have a public hearing and get out there, right?
Right.
Public hearing is never harmless.
Why is that, Frank?
Well, um, they shouldn't have a public hearing. I'm not saying that, but it can be very harmful at times, especially with this project.
Yeah, but I think we owe it to the public to have a public hearing. We owe it to them, and, right? I mean, it's nothing being done. It's, it's a good learning experience and the educating people on this whole thing, right? Jay?
Can I ask what the project we're talking about is?
Uh, it's for the, uh, airport runway project on, uh, Route 32 and Airport Way, the 74 unit senior housing.
Okay, so the plain view apartment?
Plain view apartment.
So, it's, sorry to interrupt here, but is that located next to where the diner is?
Yes.
That spot where there's a house there or something that would be taken down and put there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And did this project already go to the planning and everything?
It's all, well.
Yes, right, I'm too ahead of that.
Superior Court, it went to Supreme Court, it went to the planning board, it went through the process.
Okay, and it's done? Okay.
From, from a planning perspective, it has its approvals.
Yeah.
No, I.
That's what I was trying to get to, from the plans area, it's got its approval. Did you want to say something?
Nope, I, Jay asked the question I was gonna ask.
I'm sorry, Jay, did I interrupt you?
Well, no.
When was it approved?
I, I just, this, this project has been controversial, just so you know, it was a project that was controversial from the beginning. However, it passed all the tests to be approved. It has been approved. And as a result of the process by which it got approved, the developer is suing members of the town, the planning board and the zoning board for the process, for delaying the process, is what he's explaining, just in terms of background. That's what's going on here. So, there are a lot of people who are not happy with this developer, and that's, that's what Mike was referring to. This could be a volatile meeting, a town meeting, but it's very important to get it out in the open and do it, do it right out in the front. And the thing is, regardless of my personal feelings, this went through all the process it needed to go through and got approved.
Yeah. Well, knowing what I know now and where we're at with this, I think we owe the public hearing. I think, I think it would be, I don't think it would be fair to anybody, the town and the people that are doing this project right now. I think we need to put that aside and, and have the public hearing.
And, and, you know, in the public hearing, questions could be asked about where this money's gonna go and what is going to accomplish, and whether this will be, the project is gonna be able to move forward or not in any respect. But I don't see any reason for the town to hold back on either meeting, or both of the, I'm not so sure the town has any business, you know? No.
Yeah, but Billy, can I ask you a question? In this public hearing, would some of that issues be allowed to be answered about the, the legal end of this aspect? Or would that be stay, that would stay out of it, wouldn't it?
It should, yes, it should.
It should, right?
The only question, the only way back, the grant, that's the.
What's that?
The only question that should be asked and answered is, when we get an explanation, is should the town Swansea back the plan?
Correct.
Okay, but yeah, I always thought like Jay said, it's already been decided. But I just wanted to give you the background on the, your side of it. But I think there's no point in re-litigating this whole thing. What has to happen is, what, it seems to me, is this a benefit to the town Swansea? If so, we should go forward with it. If it's, and that's the question. And, and, I mean, at this point, the project is approved. I'm not sure we should, as a town, stand in the way of the project happening. That's, you know, we just have.
We don't have the right. Right, we don't have the right to stand in its way.
Exactly. So, so, again, um, that's, that's what my personal feelings, for whether that's right.
We just need to make a motion to.
We have different feelings on my.
Have a public hearing, is that what I need to do?
How do you date that? How do you, how do you put the date on that? Do we pick a date for that or for the public hearing?
The, the individual who would be presenting on behalf of, of Avon Rouge Development and who would handle the, the block grant request on the 17th.
The 17th?
Because of the fact that it's a regular meeting date.
Oh, that would be the 17th of December? Is, Lori, what do you feel about the 17th of December?
I think that's fine.
You do?
Yeah, so it would be, we would be the ones noticing the hearing, if it coming from the town.
Yeah.
Do you wanna make the motion that we have a public hearing on this?
I make a motion that we have a public hearing for Avon, I don't know how to say it.
Avon?
Avenue, Avenue or something.
Avenue Development.
Avenue.
On December 17th at our regular scheduled select board meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Come back over here, we have a lot.
All right, Lori, you'll have to, um, you'll have to take care of that. Nothing to do with me, right?
Right.
Okay. Old business. Before we get to the budget, let's have an update with regard to the Class 6 and private road agreement. So, we were, our attorney, Johnson forwarded his memo with regard to the Class 6 road agreement. I did not see anything in there with regard to private road, so did that.
I, I think it was just the policy that he sent to us. So, that's what's in here for approval, and I haven't heard back on the, when there was an email chain going back and forth, and you responded to Cordell saying, yes, he had said, let's, we can do this, and you said, yes, please do that. So, I haven't, I haven't received anything back from him yet. So, I'll have to call up with him on the waiver, but this is the policy that he, um, sent us.
All right, but I believe it's just specific to Class 6, and you wanted to talk to him about incorporating private road into the same agreement.
But they're two separate things. This is the, the, um, Class 6 road policy that you were referring to. And then the waiver, which was the other email, where he is gonna go back and incorporate those other changes.
Right, but for this, we're just talking about the, the agreement and the discussion you had with Jim last week. Uh, Jim wanted two separate documents. You wanted a combined document.
Right. Yeah, right.
But this is not a combined document.
The one that's in the packet is a policy.
Right.
That our DPW director, and you had worked on, and we sent it to Cordell, and he drafted this for us. So, this is in here for the board's approval tonight.
For Class 6 road.
For Class 6 road.
But, we, just to finish what we discussed last week, if we understood you correctly, your intent was that it would be a policy that would include private roads?
Not a policy, there is a difference, policy and a waiver.
And we know that, but the discussion was about the policy.
Yep. No, the discussion was about the waiver.
With the waiver.
Yep, it was about the waiver.
Okay, then we're good.
'Cause we were gonna sign the waiver, and I said, let's sign the waiver, and then you can give us another waiver for private road.
Right.
And you suggested that, why don't we just make this waiver for both?
Yep, and then...
And are we doing that?
And we, there was that email chain, and Cordell was explaining it, and Bill said, yes, Cordell, go with that, and I just haven't gotten it back from Cordell, so I can...
Okay, now I understand. All right. Everybody got a chance to read it?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Class 6 road policy.
That's drafted.
That's drafted.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Budget.
Michael, I just got home a few hours ago, I was out of town, I apologize. Then I missed...
Maybe next month.
Yeah, I know, I keep promising you that, but I...
Well, it's what I got.
Between my mother and my aunts and...
There's all the more for me to eat.
All right, Mike, I just didn't want you to think that I don't think lightly of that.
Could we go over the memo to start?
Teresa's.
Yep. Do you want to just go through the high points?
Sure.
All right. Sorry, Zimia?
I don't know, I copied it off of Teresa's. Do you have it?
I think she emailed it to you guys last night.
Okay, I'm sorry, can we share it?
Yep.
Yeah, basically, it was just highlighting that there are several items included in the 2026 budget proposal, that were either under-budgeted or not included in the 2025 operating budget, which was basically, this is our starting point for how we arrived where we are in our budget today. So, those numbers, that figure resulted to an increase of $483,000, roughly $483,000 over last year's budget. So, that's any kind of wage increases for positions that were vacant, that we filled, I think the top line, right on, right on the top line of the budget, the part-time salary, like, we included another minute taker, and so those are just adjustments, that's just an example of what we didn't necessarily have in last year's budget, but they're in this year's budget, so this is gonna be our starting point for the 2026 proposed budget. So, I thought it was important to highlight the fact that we're already at, coming into this budget season, 2026, we're about $500,000 over last year, just a baseline, over last year. And it, she did list some of those items, I don't know, do you want me to go into detail with those, Bill?
Please.
Okay. So, those were positions and new hires being paid at a higher rate than what was budgeted. That was a total increase of about $227,000.
So, was that delineated, because I'm struggling to come up with $200,000 in added positions that weren't accounted for, and increased compensation?
What do you mean, was that delineated?
Well, how does it break out? We...
So, she has this big, huge, detailed spreadsheet, and she went through and made up all the changes that the board made throughout the year, and that's what all of those changes made. That could have been a buyout of a contract, it could have been the hiring of a wastewater operator, it could have been an increase to this employee for the extra duties that they're doing.
Well, I'd like to know, because DPW, for example, is the, is the one department that's actually added significant pay to it, but they were budgeted. The wastewater was already under, we had a contract.
I can have Teresa give you this breakdown, 'cause...
Yeah. So, we save money on the wastewater.
Yeah, he's bringing up a good point, because we were paying $180,000 to that company that we eliminated, and we, we thought we were saving money, like, quite a bit, on just that one.
Yep.
So...
So, there's that, and we did budget for the positions that were hired?
We did budget for the positions.
Those were, those were budgeted for?
Which ones?
The Drew and Robert, what's Drew, the other gentleman?
Now, you had to ask me.
Anyway, we had two positions that came in, they were budgeted for, Chris Simons.
Chris Simons.
So, they were, and they're a partial year, so they were both budgeted for, the positions were budgeted for, and then, as you mentioned, with Rob coming over, that was, his compensation essentially resulted from the savings that we incurred.
Keep it by position, I think, for not mentioning, just, I wouldn't mention employees' names, just keep it by position, but, but she definitely has the breakdown, and I can have her send that over too, for sure.
So, what would be the other positions? That's what I'm trying to figure out. We, but what did we hire? The fire department didn't hire, police didn't hire, recycling didn't hire, recreation didn't hire.
Kate.
But that was, the administrative assistant was a replacement for the previous administrative assistant.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say names.
So, I'd just be curious as to what the new positions are that weren't budgeted for.
I can have her know everything out.
Okay, thank you.
Payroll taxes, obviously, were part of that, and retirement, and...
And she'll, and those will be broken out as well, because they're all part of that same package.
So, this is all because of this?
Right.
This happened, and this happened.
Yep, I can have her break out all those, yep. Employee changes in health and dental plans, $129,000, so that's, you know, employees going from a two-family to a family plan, or a single plan to a family plan, just change, and hiring of these new people that are taking on, where somebody that left may have had, may have opted out, and now they're having a whole plan, so $129,000 there. Vacant positions removed entirely from the 2025 budget, that's showing an increase of $75,000.
Again, would it be interesting to know where those are coming from?
I can ask her for that, yep. Yep. It's hard for me, I wasn't here last year to remember exactly what they did cut to lower the, reduce the budget last year. So, payroll taxes and retirement related to the vacant position, that's about $20,000. And then, in addition to that $500,000 number, there's $129,000 that was included for the first payment on the bond for the fire station, which was not in there last year. So, that's our baseline of where, where us department heads are going in, we're already that much over that budget, so then, we come in, we present our requests to the board, and that's how, that's where you're seeing the percentage of increase. But I just thought it was, it was important to point out that fact that it's not just coming from what we're proposing in the 2026 budget, these are already just factors rolling in from every, from everything that was bought or in 2025. So, after Teresa and I discussed, you know, obviously, we had some numbers, and this is a working document, there's things that we're approving, we just approved the paving, you know, things are moving in here and stuff, we just approved the IT contract last week, so it is, I apologize if the numbers seem inaccurate. So, we went through and we combed, still combing through it, and we were able to decrease, obviously, the $100,000 we took out of the highway department paving line, which was what Joe just presented to us tonight. We took out one vacant full-time, one vacant full-time police officer position, and we changed it to two part-time positions with a total salary of $50,000, so that decreased it by $10,000, this was okay by the police chief. All other vacant positions, except for the selectmen and the recreation, I cut that to half a year, to starting, she, they had requested a full-time, another full-time position there, and I reduced it to a start time of July, to just, you know, kind of help with the burden of the increase in the budget.
Yeah, but that, that can't be decreased to $171,000. What does that mean? It's gotta be wronged up.
No, no, that's all other vacant positions, so not just the rec.
Oh, all other.
All other vacant positions, except selectmen, and we cut the rec to 50%. We were able to decrease it by that, $171,000.
So, that means that the vacant positions on the police force are not being accounted for?
Correct. So, the first, that first budget that we gave to you guys, all of those full-time positions, the vacant positions, the health, the family health plans, those were all in there. So, in order to reduce it from that 11% increase, we're finding ways to reduce that, but this is where we have to cut from to find savings.
So, all vacant positions were taken out?
Not all.
Not all?
No.
But, Bill just mentioned all of the fight, of police department?
No, just two of them. One full-timer went to two part-timers.
Okay. Okay. Is that true?
The fire department has...
No, the police department.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You're not eliminating all the vacant positions from the police department?
No, 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 no.
How many you eliminate from the police, two? You think two?
One full-timer became two part-timers.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have more than one open position, so...
Exactly, that's...
So, the question being asked is, how many of the vacant positions are being eliminated?
And we did that to kind of help cover the increase in the incentives that the board just approved to, for those.
We understand that, but now, we're basically not budgeting, if he's successful with the recruiting effort, and two people come in in June, we're not accounting for them.
How many people can we hire from the police department in our budget?
Right now, none. Two part-timers.
Is that what you're saying, Mike?
No, I think, because how many openings we have right now?
I think we'd leave Teresa here to know exactly. Her, her and the chief and Megan met this morning.
Because they have, like...
I think we have four openings, so... We cut it down to 12 last year, and then we went from 12, and he's, we got eight, we're full, so there's four vacancies right now, is my understanding.
Right, so we'd still have...
From the past meeting.
We still have, we couldn't hire.
Right, but we'd still have, still be finding three full-time positions and then two part-time.
Chief said today that I thought it was 14.
He'd like to have 14, but we'd like to have 12.
Correct.
Right.
We'd like to have 10, but, but I guess what we're asking is, it sounds like there's, there was, there was initially a budget for one vacant position, that's been removed, and replaced with two part-time, but the other three, or five vacant positions, those are not in the budget.
They're gonna be in there.
So, if he was able to hire one or two people, he's not budgeting for it. Is that right?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I can tell you this, she did say that she talked to the police, and he's okay with it, and you know Joe ain't gonna be okay with it if they eliminated them all, right? They talked to Joe, and Joe was agreeable.
He knows he's not, he knows he's not gonna be able to hire them. All of them.
Right, but there's a difference between not having any and having some.
Yeah, he definitely has, definitely at least two, but again, I didn't, I didn't think they were gonna get this into the nitty-gritty tonight, because we didn't have the accurate numbers, but, otherwise, I would've had her come, so that's, that's a question for our finance director.
Okay.
All right, so we gotta find that out, that's important. This is no way we can leave out that. It's not possible.
And then there were, we took out half of the two-person health plans for vacant positions, and we changed that to opt-out, so we budgeted for the opt-out plans versus the full two-person plan, and one was changed to a family plan, that was a decrease of $54,000. So, with, with that, we reduced, we took out about $335,000, bringing the proposed increase down to 8.3. And actually, we had, we added in that technology was an increase of $24,167, so it actually bumped the budget up to 8.6. I think there are areas where, again, there's a lot of pages here, and it's been three days since our last meeting, so I appreciate you guys' patience.
There's a lot.
It's a lot.
It is.
And every time we look at it, you know, we also have other tasks that we need to do in a day, we're not sitting here every moment not getting interrupted, so I appreciate your patience with us, but we are still combing through, we're gonna sit down on Friday and go over the default numbers to make sure those are accurate, 'cause I see some discrepancies in there, and some other areas where I think they're...
Did you ever find out if we had a solar rate payment?
Yep, it's in the sewer fund.
It is there.
Yep, it's budgeted for in the sewer fund, and we also kept the electricity in there at 30, I think it was $33,000, which...
That could go away too.
That will go away, but we figured we'll leave it in there as a buffer, and we can use that to, as part of the payment on the loan, so we left that in there. But there, there's other areas that, you know, I just, I need to take the time to go over and ask the department head, you know, I think the IT budget for fire, it was $16,000, but I think Teresa confirmed, well, Teresa said it was, it was like the subscriptions that they're paying for the trainings and stuff like that, so I just really need some time to just sit down and go through, you know, line by line, to make sure that we're not missing anything that we can pull out. And I think, like Bill said, it would be a good idea to schedule a work session, I don't know if we need every department head there, but I need time to go through it first. I don't wanna make people come if there's, if their budget's fine. So, if there's certain areas that...
Every budget's gotta be open. It's gotta be open. If we, if we go to the budget hearing at 9%, and we get pushback, we gotta be prepared for that. We gotta be prepared to justify the 9%, but we also gotta be prepared to be able to tell people, where do you wanna make the cuts? And, and be able to answer.
Right, which is, which is why I'm asking for just a little more time to kind of comb through it.
But it's also helpful if, if all budgets are, are open.
Open to us, you mean, that's sitting there, and we...
Yep. It's a team effort, so...
Absolutely, which is, which is why we're having these sessions, right?
Right.
'Cause certainly need more than two sets of eyes looking at this thing.
What we need is to have consistency, so we, we need to have something in front of us that is consistent, like, for example, last week's was premature, we shouldn't have had that last week, because it led to questions, because the IT wasn't fully fleshed out, it was partial. The week before that, we had payroll through a week, and AP was in arrears to that, so we, and we've gone through a couple of different renditions in the format, so what we need is, is to have, in my opinion, everything as of a certain date, maybe all at the end of October, all at the end of November, whatever, but it needs to be consistent throughout the document, and there's, can't be, can't be line items in one department that are gonna roll into another, they've gotta be rolled in, so it just, it avoids confusion. And I know it's a work in progress, and you, you and the finance director are doing a great job of it, we just gotta get there.
Yeah, it's a big ask. It's a large ask, we get it, we can handle it, we get here.
It makes my first time going through this process with you guys, you know, I'm used to a budget committee, and everybody kind of going through things together, and like you said, it's a team effort, it's, Teresa and I can't pick up on every little thing in this budget.
Yeah, but by answering questions, there's no means on our end of not being patient. We're asking these questions 'cause they're put in front of us, so it's not, we're... We're asking these questions because they're put in front of us, so it's not, we're well, we all know what you're going through. This is a lot, at least I do, and maybe I should speak for myself, but.
So and as far as consistency goes, is, is this consistent? Or is there a different format that you'd like to see?
Just a format that, that isn't gonna change. And I think what Teresa has now is, is, is fine as long as we stick with it. And, and the other aspect of it is that every municipality is going through the same thing now.
Absolutely.
Money's drying up, plans are drying up, the free flow from Washington has dried up, so.
Every town. So let me ask you, so if we, if where this sits right now, that's the number right now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Eight point six seven, right now, if we do it, that's what we have, right?
Yeah, I mean, I have my areas that if you guys are like cut five percent, I know where I'm gonna go. I have a few areas, but I think, I want some feedback from you guys.
But we want it to be prudent in the sense that, as you've pointed out previously, some of the changes we made last year are coming back to haunt us this year.
And that's why I thought it was important to put that, that big increase to say, listen, this is what, we can do this. We can make the cuts like we did, but this is, it's kind of like a chain effect. The projects, we wanna do these projects, but we just gotta make sure that we have the staff to do the projects to fulfill the duties.
Do you need, does Teresa have the answer to that question that Bill answered now? Or we gotta give you time for that? To, to break down what all these, these.
She probably, she probably can get that.
I think. But you seen it, it's all laid out of how she come up.
Yeah, the details.
Yeah. So we're gonna have her send that out to us and mail it out to us?
It's a file that says start here and that's where you start and it's just, I'll send it to you.
It's a lot.
I'll email it to you guys.
Is it something we should, I should go to the op, to the town and sit? Not real quick?
All right. Administrative update.
What do we got? Oh, we wanted to go over something for the county, I think.
Well, I'd like to know where we stand with the county with regard to the EMS proposal. And do you feel that the information that Cheryl Trombley provided is adequate? Or do you feel that, or would you like to have the county representatives come in and present their proposal to the board?
I feel confident in what they gave me. That would be up to the board if they want them to come in and do a presentation. She did send over an email. She said the county will be charging forty-six dollars per capita, of which we have the most recent population for Swansea as seventy-four twenty-eight, seven thousand four hundred.
So what's that come out to?
Well, she's got the breakdown right here. So the current contract for Swansea ends in June of this year. And so January through June, our payment would be forty thousand, seven seventy-four, thirty-nine cents. And then July through December will be a hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars for a total budgeted amount of two hundred and eleven dollars and two hundred and eleven thousand, six eighteen and thirty-nine cents.
And so then in twenty-seven, we get the full impact.
Yep, and then she says we plan. Plan to present a two-year contract at the forty-six dollars per capita beginning July first, twenty-twenty-six. So I imagine they'll come this summer to us with that proposal. And that would allow us to negotiate pricing in late fall of twenty-twenty-seven so that the town will know the new pricing that would go into effect July first, twenty-twenty-eight.
So could you go back over that?
Oh, yep, did I miss this? So twenty-twenty-seven, sorry, do you want me to back up to this year?
No, this year we got a hundred and seventy and forty.
Yep.
But when are they coming in for a two-year contract?
So they're gonna come in, so, so the two hundred and eleven thousand is this year's cost for the ambulance. In twenty-twenty-seven, that would be your first full year at three hundred and forty-one thousand, six eighty-eight.
But when are they coming in for the contract?
And then they're gonna, they're gonna come in in the spring.
Of twenty-six, for a two-year contract?
So two hundred and eleven thousand, that's more than six months, right?
That's for the full year, yeah.
Two hundred and eleven, and then they're saying the next would be three, what?
Three forty-one.
Three forty-one.
Oh, so we were, we were correct on what we thought they were coming in at, very close.
Yep, and we have money set aside that will buffer some of that? So.
What do we have aside, was it one fifty or something?
Something like that.
Yeah.
In the, in the capital reserve.
Hundred and fifty. And that's gonna absorb some of the two eleven, right?
It can.
And we can use it, saw some of it there and.
And some of it the following year.
Maybe some of it the following year, right?
So that's good to know, that we could, we could save. You're saying we could reduce this year's budget of two eleven with money from capital reserve?
That was the purpose of it, was to, to build up, to soften the blow.
So. Yeah, we used a hundred, but it's something that would.
Seventy-five, any of this, at least half of it.
You do half of that, maybe. That would help us, right, Laurie?
Okay, so you feel comfortable with those numbers, so there's no reason for them to come in now? You, you feel in the spring?
You don't think we should take our presentation from there anyways, or would you?
That's, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, but her answer was that, that's really up to the board, us, right? If we wanna see them come in. And I don't know, you're comfortable with it?
Personally.
You are?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
I think we've got a, a good road the next two months, there'll be some heavy lifts coming.
Right. Good.
Anything else, Madam Town Administrator?
That's all I got.
Okay. Last shout of public input, Jay.
Listening to things happen, I've got three things I just wanted to ask you guys about. One was, I heard you mention a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the fire. My, you know, I'm just curious how that's all budgeted because we're no longer asking for a warrant article to put money in the reserve fund for the, for the fire station. So in some senses, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was on the budget last year has become a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
That's a very good question.
So it's not necessarily a hundred and twenty-nine thousand addition over last year's budget in some senses because it was a warrant article last year, now it's inside the town budget. So I'm just curious how the county works with that. So that, you know, is there, does that mean your county is easier? Because it was already there last year, now it's somewhere different? I mean, I just, I'm not curious, I'm curious how that works.
Well, it wasn't there last year because the voters didn't approve it. But last year they approved the bond payment, which was part of the warrant article. And that's the rate we got, which was.
The year previous.
Yep.
Right.
Right.
So this year, this year, we paid a bond payment. And we didn't, it was the first year we didn't, right?
Not yet.
This is the first year we're gonna pay it, right?
Yep, we're adding it.
So what we, what we. So, so basically, it, it does count as an addition to the budget for a given.
Yeah, because I wasn't aware that what you said, we didn't put it in last year.
From, from this year.
Well, because the bond passed.
The bond passed, so we wouldn't.
The bond passed, so that, that hundred and fifty thousand didn't pass. So, so basically what I'm saying is there's no, there's no gain there. I don't want to be sure about that. Second thing was, just before I came here, I was reading the summary of new, new RSAs, et cetera, et cetera. And one of them was about private roads and so on. It said that a town can choose to do, but if it's gonna have any kind of restrictions on private roads, that you have to develop a private road policy. And that's, that's, you know, you don't have to provide a policy. If you, if you're going to have a private road, if you're gonna put restrictions on development on private roads, then you need to have a private road policy. It sounds to me like that's a separate thing from, from a class six road policy.
But I don't think we're putting restrictions.
If you're gonna ask for a waiver, that's what I'm saying. The waivers, if you, if the policy would include a waiver that the property owner had to sign, then it sounds to me, my understanding, that you would have to have a written policy like you just did a policy in class six. And I, I'm just saying, maybe you could tell us more about that. Because it, it makes sense to have a waiver for a private road if you don't have a policy about private roads.
Good point.
And I think that, that my law, you have to have a policy for private roads if you're gonna ask the property owner to do anything. And it, and it, I just, I didn't get a chance to read it carefully because I had to get out of my house and get down here to see you guys. So I'm just suggesting that you talk to him before you go ahead with putting the two things on one waiver. Because if you do that, you might also have to do a policy for private roads.
We should get the planning board involved in that too, because they would be the ones approving developments.
And it says you can leave it in the hands of the planning board to do all the restrictions and whatnot.
Where would the two policies be differ from, from class six and private?
Well, it's private roads, so it's private property.
I know, but policy wise.
The only reason that you would have, for me, the only reason you would wanna have a private road waiver is so that the private homeowner, say a fire truck has to go down Orchard Lane, right? And the private people are probably, and the fire truck can't get through. The waiver would.
Exactly, and so my question was, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to read it carefully. But it could be that you have, in order to have the waiver, you have to have a policy. You might not have to, because it said you could leave it in the hands of the planning board. You don't have to have a policy, you can leave it in the hands of the planning board. But if the planning board then would require a waiver for, to pass something like this.
I haven't seen a policy for private roads, but I haven't seen that RSA. We didn't send it my way.
It was a new, it was a new policy, I was just, it's on my computer right now or I left it and I can send it to you.
Sure.
But it's just a, it's from the National Municipal Association summarizing the changes in zoning and planning issues. And I just thought it'd be, so I could throw it in the mix here. Yeah, last thing is I noticed from your opening minutes that you got the name of the committee I was assigned to. Correct, does that mean you have signed the, the articles which allow the committee to be official? So that I can go in and get this one in, because I tried to go in this morning and they did no office committee. And then I was told that until the staff would sign it, I could take my oath of office, so.
Apparently it's already been signed.
Oh, good.
You're good.
I just didn't want to bother you until it's, thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jay. Michael?
Gee, can I ask you what made you look up that?
We have some fun to share with all these new, it's one thousand and eighty LSARs right now. And like I said, class six, are they gonna change it?
Jimmy, the reason I looked up is that because I remember the zoning board.
Oh.
When I, I, I read these things from the National Municipal Association and I go into their professional development things and try to learn as much as I can about, Mike is doing the same thing for the planning board. We, it's just a matter of trying to know what we're doing.
Good.
New changes, it's important to know these rules. This doesn't apply to me on the zoning board, but brothers, it did. You know, I'm still, I'm halfway through this little list of things and talking about. And maybe I should have done it earlier, but maybe I should have gone to this presentation. This is a summary of a presentation they gave, but I couldn't make it.
I have the video, so you can call.
I can get the video to, it's probably good. But I'd rather you listen to things, sometimes that's.
It's easier to retain.
It puts me to sleep.
Any else? Do we have any non-public? Thank you, Jay.
Uh, yes, we do.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. We should be going under.
By the way, being up close made all the difference to where you can hear.
Oh, good.
I was thinking it's probably because I'm talking this way.
We're working on, Laurie, get a stronger voice.
But I think it's because I'm talking this way and not.
No, I think it, it really makes a difference. So we can add, add the stuff this way.
Good, great.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Going to non-public under.
That's mine, let's hold it up. Yeah, we are going under, hang on, let me grab.
It's so freaking cold in this place. Are you not gonna have meetings in Hennamau?
I'm freezing.
I'm pretty serious? I'm probably gonna catch ammonia. Ammonia, yeah. I bet you I'm gonna catch it. I'm gonna have the biggest flu, flu that you.
Will you give it a second?
Second.
What, what's your letter? What you calling on?
Reputation.
Under reputation, C, ninety-one.
Yep, C.
Ninety-one C.
Second.
Second.
Roca, Tempesta.
Thank you, Nick.